Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council and San Bruno Redevelopment Agency meeting of June 22, 2010. I'd like to call a meeting to order and first of all, thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the beautiful floral arrangement and the fragrant one tonight that they provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Medina.
Here.
And I'd like to add Chair Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember, Agency member Ibera.
Here.
And Councilwoman O'Connell is excused tonight with notice and Councilmember Salazar won't be joining us, he has a personal matter that requires immediate attention this evening. We have the Pledge of Allegiance and Pamela Thompson, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose existence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, announcements. You will hear more about this in detail later, but this is Pamela Thompson's last city council meeting. It's not because of treetops, but she will be starting next month as the new city attorney in Redwood City and she's going to talk to us a little bit, a little later, about her experience in San Bruno. So, thank you very much Pamela. Presentations, are no presentations this evening. Review of the agenda, any items, we'll move around a little bit. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 8, 2010. Ares emissions. Stand approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any items on the consent calendar?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, notices have been published, posted, and mailed. We're going to hold a public hearing and adopt resolutions approving the city manager's recommended 2010-2011 general funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds budget. Approve the city manager's recommended 2010-11 San Bruno Redevelopment Agency budget and determining that the planning and administration expenses funded in fiscal year 2010-11 by the Low and Modern Income Housing Fund are necessary for the production improvement and/or preservation of affordable housing for low and modern income households. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In view of the fact that this is a very important item that the city council has actually considered, at least in preliminary manner, over the last couple of months, I would recommend that you might want to consider simply continuing this item to the next meeting at which time you would expect all five city council members to be present. We can do that in either of two different ways. We can either provide, if you're interested in doing that, we can provide you the staff report this evening, after which you can open the public hearing, take any comment from individuals that are here tonight, and continue that public hearing open until July 13. Alternatively, we can hold the staff report and deliver that to you on the 13th and you can simply open the public hearing and then take any comment from the public and continue it until the 13th. Either way, you have a noticed public hearing on the agenda. I think it's prudent at the minimum to take the opportunity, in case there is anybody in the audience, to make sure that you do allow them to speak, but we can do that with or without the staff report if that's your pleasure.
All right, since we don't want to prolong and we want the staff report in the future if we're going to put this off to be nice and fresh in our minds, why don't we just open the public hearing and ask any members of the public would like to speak on this item, to please come forward. All right, seeing none, we will put this item off until our meeting of July the 13th?
That is correct, and that will require, in order that operations may continue, that will require a special meeting that we can schedule with the city council at a later point to occur hopefully next week, at which time we would ask the city council simply to adopt an appropriations resolution that would allow some limited appropriations to support continuing operations with the city for the period between now and your adoption of the budget on July 13.
Okay, then you'll get back to us with some dates and we'll-
I will.
-get that set up.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. We don't need a motion for this, right?
You do not.
Okay.
So you're going to continue the public hearing open?
Yes. Okay, item number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. As the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation or action where appropriate, the Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council, matters not on the agenda? All right, we'll go right onto conduct of business. A, adopt the resolution approving the city's appropriations limit of $29,35,970 for 2010-11, the GAN initiative. Now should we do this, or should we put this off also?
We can proceed with this item tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The GAN limit, in November 1979, Proposition 4, otherwise known as the GAN Initiative or GAN Limit, was passed, limiting the amount of tax revenues that government agencies, including cities and counties, can receive and appropriate each year. Subsequently, in June of 1990, Proposition 111 was approved, further refining the methodology for performing the appropriations limit calculations there. Cities now have a choice of either using the city or the state population growth as its population factor in doing the computation, and then secondly, cities can use either the growth of the California per capita income or the growth in the non-residential assessed valuation due to new construction within the city for its inflation factor calculation. For fiscal year 2010-11, staff is recommending that the selection of the county population growth of 1.17% be used as its population factor. The city's population growth was 1.13%, so therefore we're using the larger factor. And as far as the inflation factor, staff is recommending using the California per capita personal income factor. That actually had a negative growth factor of 2.54%. The non-residential construction growth information is not yet available from the county and therefore we're defaulting to the California per capita personal income factor for use. Using these two factors that I just described, the GAN limit for the upcoming 2010-11 fiscal year works out to be $29,35,917,000. And in computing the city's proceeds of taxes subject to the appropriation limit, that works out to be $17,370,728. This leaves a 40% margin below the limit as set forth by the computation. The recommendation from staff is that the city council approve the 2010-11 appropriation limit of $29,035,917. So I'll be happy to take any questions from the city council.
Any questions for our director? Any action?
To the chair, I'll introduce, adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10B, we have three items. Waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance approving the amendment to the development plan to allow two alternative design options. Adopt a resolution approving a 12-month extension of Plan Development Permit 0502, which currently allows for the demolition of the existing 308-unit apartment complex and the development of 510 new residential units. And adopt a resolution approving Plan Development Permit 1001, an architectural review permit to allow for the renovation of the existing 308 apartment units per Chapter 12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code as an alternative project design option under the development plan. Staff report, please.
Thank you and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As the council remembers, this item has been before you several times in different iterations. In 2006, the developer received approval to build a 510-unit building, and 2008, they received approval by the city council for a new architectural design related to that 510-unit building. And two weeks ago, they were here before you with two different actions. The first was requesting an ordinance amendment to allow two different development options on this site. One development option would be the 510-unit building that was previously approved, and the second option was the renovation design alternative. And this is basically a renovation of the existing 308 units that are on-site, modernization of the complex that is there now. The city council at that meeting took action and adopted the ordinance for the plan development, had the first reading of the ordinance. However, the city council deferred action on the resolutions that would approve the Plan Development Permit for both the 510-unit project as well as the 308-unit project, and gave several direction related to these resolutions. The primary direction related to the 308-unit renovation project. So I'll just go over briefly what those are. The first and biggest change was to modify the conditions of approval to allow the applicant to dedicate Susan Drive and Highland Drive as public roadways. As the council remembers, this is a roadway that the public travels through, through their development, and council gave direction to include the allowance of making these public roadways. With that in mind, staff has worked with the developers over the last two weeks in an improvement agreement, and the newest version of that improvement agreement has been passed out to the council tonight. And what that does, it shows what the terms will be for the city to accept ownership of the roadway, as well as the applicant's continuing obligation for the roadway during the construction period. The other conditions that were modified is there was the condition related, you know, you may remember that there was quite a bit of discussion around the trash compactor. There was a modification to that condition of approval that it must comply with all, with the city's noise ordinance. We removed the condition of approval for the 179,000 sewer line relocation work. This is just for the renovation project, though. The condition remains in the report if the developer decides to proceed with the new 510-unit building. We added a condition that requires the applicant maintain utilities as private utilities. Modified a condition of approval related to the exact number of trees that would have to be planted as a street tree planting program, and what staff will do is take a look at the final landscaping plan, and all trees that serve as street trees will be credited to the developer's overall obligation, and the remaining amount will be part of a neighborhood street tree planning program. One important condition related to safety is we added a condition that the applicant must trim or remove vegetation for site visibility reasons on Shark Park and Susan Drive and maintain that visibility throughout the life of the project. And another change was we modified the maintenance plan. All the routine obligations, picking up trash, removing graffiti, have to start immediately. They have to enter into this maintenance plan by June 30th, and the more structural obligations kick in on November 1st if the developer has not proceeded with construction. That includes securing the balconies, power washing the mold off the buildings, and removing and boarding up some of the windows. So those were the major modifications. In terms of triggers, as you know, the development plan allows two different options. Either option would go away once the developer pulls a building permit for one of them, so right now it looks like they're going the course for the 308-unit renovation project. In fact, they've already submitted building permit plans for this, and we're about to be in our second round of review for this. So they are well underway doing that. For either project, they have to start construction within a year time period, so there is a time period which they have to do this by. And their current development schedule has them breaking ground construction most likely in the middle of fall, so late October, early November. There is one remaining disagreement that has to do with stormwater. As noted, staff has conditioned the report per city council direction that the stormwater system must remain private. Couple important things to note that went into making this recommendation. This is a similar situation to what we have all around San Bruno. We are a hillside community and often stormwater collects on one private property, goes across another private property on the way to the public storm drain system. Simple example of this, if you have a neighbor that sits up slope from you, their stormwater may travel off, as gravity dictates, their stormwater may travel off of their property, onto your property, onto the stormwater system. So that is the primary reason why we conditioned it as such. Another important thing to note is that it would create a Shelter Creek-like situation as a part of the stormwater pipe goes between buildings on the Treetops property. So I'm sure the applicant will also state their side of the story, but with that, we'd like to recommend approval of the resolutions in the report with the modifications and direction by council.
Any questions of staff? All right, see the applicant, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and I'd like to thank staff for organizing over this last two weeks, all the conditions and working with us. I think we've come to an agreement with everything except for this particular item relating to storm drains, so thank you. What I've provided you is a graphic, and I've shown this to staff as well, and it is summarizing or at least showing you what is existing out there today as far as the storm drains. I've been in discussions over the past two weeks with Public Works, and I've also attempted to explain at, two weeks ago, in the last city council meeting, what we had thought was the presentation and the agreement with council, and that was that the property owner Aimco would take on these sewer improvements, we would take on the water improvements, and in exchange, the city was going to take on the streets and ownership and maintain them along with storm drains. As I explained in the last meeting, these storm drains, when council asked me if I agreed with staff on the utilities, all of which just serving our property, I agreed that the sewer does in fact just serve our property. I disagreed lightly that the water lines also is part of a loop system, but does predominantly serve our property, therefore we would take on the ownership and maintenance of those lines. However, I did explain to council that the storm drain does in fact serve other properties, that being Evergreen as well as ours, and as well as the street itself. We were under the impression that that was, council's understanding as well, that they would take on these streets and storm drain. If you look at the graphic, it's clear that the storm drain line, a large part, we believe it's the majority of Evergreen. I think staff discussed with me today that it's, that they've concluded maybe it's half of Evergreen, albeit Evergreen does drain into this storm drain system. Part of the street that is off our property, Susan Drive, also drains into this system, which is the city's street that's off our property. And that's in the lower right-hand corner of the graphic. As it comes off our property, you'll see some catch basins. That portion of Susan Drive drains into those catch basins, and that is, again, part of the public watershed. When the streets themselves become city streets, those streets will drain into catch basins, and if council can recall, two weeks ago when I explained this, it just makes practical sense for the storm drain lines themselves, which have catch basins that are integral with the streets themselves, to be therefore maintained by the person that owns and maintains the streets themselves. Our property does drain into this storm drain system as well, and it does exit for about 200 feet between buildings, which I understand is different than other projects in town where you have a lot longer distance between buildings where a lot bigger issues can come That's my understanding of exactly what exists today and what I tried to explain to council two weeks ago. We would like the city to maintain the catch basins and storm drain lines that are within Susan Drive and that also exit out to the public system.
Does that include the storm drains that travel through your property?
The storm drain lines that are not highlighted on this graphic, we would, they're on our property per se, not in the, what are soon to be public streets. We would be maintaining those.
Okay.
And there's three inlets? Is that what those three?
That is correct. The three lines that stop right at the edge of the road, that's where our lines would come in.
Okay. There's nothing down on Elston?
There are two catch basins down at the bottom where Elston and Highland join, and if you recall, two weeks ago, staff did conclude, and I'll let staff answer this question, that they already own and maintain those. I don't want to speak for staff on that.
But does Treetops connect into it?
The Highland Drive, we don't connect into those two catch basins, no. It drains Highland Drive. And part of Elston.
Aaron, you spoke a little earlier about, you know, how storm drains work, goes through private property. What's the typical, has been the typical responsibility? I know we really got burned on Shelter Creek because we had a situation that caused an awful lot of damage that we ended up being responsible for, so is there a typical precedent over and over and over again about responsibilities for these storm drains?
It's my understanding, and Clark could speak to any of the technical aspects, it's my understanding that stormwater systems that pass through private developments are maintained by the owners of that private development. It's somewhat of a unique situation since there is the public roadway that goes through here, but it is a private system within the private development, so that would be consistent with past precedent.
Okay, so technically it's in the development, but it happens to be within a street that the city has within the development?
Correct, and it's also next to other utilities that are going to be privately maintained.
Okay. Questions?
To the chair, I want to just touch on the roads very quickly. I know that that came up last time, I understand there's the conditions, because your legal counsel last time made reference that I went back, wanted to hear the dialogue, and about hoping to bring it up or doing the best we can, and I know there's clear conditions and standards that are being set by the city, and I just wanted assurance that irrelevant, whether it's below the engineering costs, above the engineering costs, that all these standards and obligations are met by the developer and these roads and conditions, when we do get them, that they are brought up to that standard. And is that the understanding and agreement?
That is the understanding, and just recently, we've agreed with staff to, if you recall, it was, there was a figure of $159,000 of improvements we were going to do to the roads. That has now increased to the tune of anywhere from $40,000 to $50,000 more due to some requirements that staff would like us to do even more than what we had said or a third-party report had said. So yes, and that is in the improvement agreement as well.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Okay.
At this point, I'd like to hear from our directors to what the liabilities could be in the immediate future or long range. I mean, and what concerns me is that there is considerable bound, it appears to be a considerable amount of runoff from the Evergreen property, in addition to what comes down Susan Drive and travels from the south on Susan Drive off-site.
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. Our main consideration, making the recommendation not to take over this section of the storm system, is more a long-term financial concern and liability concern, knowing our challenges managing in overall city, our stormwater system, which the city funding is very limited, and our stormwater fund is not enough to manage the existing system citywide. That is, was the main criteria, how staff really analyzed this situation and made the recommendation to you. Based on our information in many other situations all over the city, you will see this type of situation when the surface water from the joint properties are discharged through another system, through their property, and still is in the obligation of those private owners to take responsibility for long-term maintenance of the system. What is unique in this situation is that the city really taking over the responsibility of the road itself. That's why this maybe, this situation is a little bit unique or different than the other situation, but the city made the decision to take over the road to really make this development to happen, and the city already taking over a long-term financial liability, taking over the road, and this would just add to that financial long-term liability to the city, if the city would take over the storm system also. Based on our very rough estimate, without to do any scientific calculation or anything, was our assumption that the volume discharged through the system from Evergreen would be around 20% of the total volume carried in the system, but this is how I said, more a guesstimate and rough assessment than anything else. If the city would even, if you want to consider to take over the storm system as part of the road, even in that case, I would not recommend to take over any portion of that system outside of the road. That section which basically, of the system outside of the road, which goes between two buildings, knowing the experience what the city had previously on Shelter Creek and on many other, the same situation, I certainly would not recommend.
I agree. I totally agree, and I agree, and I would also add to that, who's to anticipate what the liability is, taking a majority or at least half of the runoff from Evergreen, you know, at the south end of the property? What if, what if something happened there and it happened to be right on Susan Drive?
And I will just add also, in many other situations, like on Madison and many other locations, you have volley gutters basically taking surface runoff from dozen and dozen property to somebody else's property, and they are still maintained by those property owners, and those situations are all over the city. And yes, I think this is a big issue for the city, but as consistency, I don't see any departure from the existing situation citywide.
And one last thing, what, how would you distinguish between maintaining the storm drain just in the road and not, you know, and then cutting off, you know, once it went off the road?
My recommendation would be not to take over any portion of the storm system, but only just in the case if you really want to consider that I just offered as a possible alternative. And how, certainly this, this part of the system is a private system, it's not city-owned through Evergreen. That means that it's not even under discussion right now, then would be only just the portion of the system until- until the storm system leaves the road.
And, and clearly, the entire, everything that is highlighted here is on private property now. And until, until it hits the north end of, which is, between Susan Drive and Sharp Park Road, that outlet.
Correct, but will be, is no question about that the storm system collects the runoff from the road itself also, which after taking over the road will become a public road. But that volume is very limited and very small. And from our point of view, that should not create a problem for us that would flood the road or really would create any flooding on the road itself, considering the geography of that area.
Okay.
Okay.
If I could, Mayor, members of council, hearing what staff is, is discussing and some of these questions, if, if it helps clarify or help a decision come to fruition would be that 200-foot segment that actually is on our property that goes between the two buildings. Since it is somewhat of a unique condition that Clara was describing, that you do have catch basins on city streets receiving city water, so to speak, that runs off from those. If the city were to take on those, we could then agree to maintain that 200-foot segment that is on our property, that would not be on the public streets. So I don't know if that helps.
Go ahead, I'm talking here for the city manager.
I would just make one additional comment. I think the two directors have been very thorough in their commentary and their presentations, and I would agree absolutely with Mr. Finnegan that the portion of the storm drain line that underlies private property, property that will continue to be in private ownership by Aimco, should not be considered for the city council's decision-making tonight in terms of becoming a public facility. I would also remind the city council that what you have before you tonight is a completely discretionary approval that confers a significant entitlement to the property owner and one which is historically unprecedented in this city at least, where there is, in fact, two different options being provided to the, to the owner for their eventual consideration of development of the property. So you, you have a relatively large discretion in, in making this approval and in considering this issue as one of those items for your consideration as part of that approval.
All right, thank you.
Does the city attorney or the director of community development have any other additional comments or suggestions, thoughts that they would like to offer?
Only this, and put bluntly.
You can, you can do that, go ahead.
It's my last night, I'm gonna go for it.
You've been holding back, just go.
I, I agree completely with what the city manager said, and, and it really comes down to this. This is an entitlement that is unusual, unique, and different. Is completely within the city council's discretion as to whether it wants to grant it or not. And while I do have to compliment Mr. Finnegan for being absolutely thorough, and forgive me if I use the word relentless, I'm pursuing every possible advantage for Aimco. He's done an excellent job with that. I, I, I would indicate to the, or say to the city council that, given what's at stake, the city council taking over the road, allowing a discretionary approval that actually puts in the developer's hands the option as to which project it should do, a power normally reserved for the city council, that the developer should be in here offering to you every other single thing it could in order to ease your decision. Thank you.
I thought you'd be saving those compliments for us, not the developer.
You're probably not surprised that I agree entirely. Mr. Finnegan, just so you know, I'm, I'm really hesitant about, you know, taking over this, a piece of this and a piece of that. So, like I said, we've been burned before, and this is a unique situation, and you have been very creative, and I think the city is, if I may say, bent over backwards in the last year or two to be creative in this whole situation here. Never before have we had parallel projects like this going forward. Work with you with the engineering to make sure, in fact, the 308 units would in fact work. Assume responsibility for the road and, and things that we were really hesitant about doing. So I can tell you right now that I'm very hesitant about assuming the stormwater on the whole project.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Anybody else? Sean?
I just, I want to, I want to thank council and thank staff, and I just, I appreciate everything that both council and staff has done for us in, in hearing us. We, we feel as if we came to an agreement two weeks ago and taking on certain things, and we do appreciate how, how much staff and council have bent over for us and allowing us to move forward. We, we do want to do this project, we're in plan check. We just, we were hoping to not have any issues tonight. It just made sense, we just, we thought this one was resolved. And with the city owning the streets, it just makes sense for the catch basins to go along with that. We don't see this as a large dollar item. Storm drains typically don't have a lot of maintenance to them, so.
And, and I appreciate your, your comments, and I think you, along with staff and the council, we're all wanting to see this project come to fruition. No ands, ifs, or buts. And where I spoke last time to say that the streets, I could see accepting those because they're of public interest, I don't see that when we come to the utilities, they serve the public interest as the roads do. And as the mayor had indicated, as far as Shelter Creek, and I've heard from a wise man, that one said, you know, I wish we could do the parking all over and go back in time, or what we accepted as far as what the mayor was talking about on the sewer and other issues, well, we can't. We can learn from those and go forward. And I think that's what I'm going to do here, is learn from the past and ensure the citizens of this community aren't faced with that type of situation again.
Okay, anything else?
I agree. I'm ready to go.
Aaron, the item B, the waive second reading, the adopt both resolutions includes the developer taking responsibility for the entire storm drain system?
Correct.
Okay. Any action by the council?
Can't go.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm sorry, what?
Do we need to waive the second reading?
Make motion to waive the second reading?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
And then make motion to adopt the ordinance? Approving amendment to development plan? Is that correct?
Council.
Okay.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can give you the titles. Would that help you?
Adopt the resolution, approving the 12-month extension?
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And also to adopt the resolution approving Plan Development Permit 10-01, and with architectural review permit at all.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Thank you. Item C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with KJ Woods Construction for the Mastic Avenue Utility Improvements Project in the amount of $1,295,286.70 and approving the construction budget in the amount of $1,560,000. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This agenda item is for council to adopt resolution to authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with KJ Woods in the amount of $1,295,286.70 and approving the construction budget in the amount of $1.56 million. In this first slide here, that shows the limits of a construction for this project. The scope of this project includes the installation approximately 3,000 feet of new sewer mains and replacement of sewer laterals and manholes, and also the installation of approximately 3,000 linear feet of water main, water service laterals, and also the valves, water valves on Mastic Avenue between Angus and St. Philip. Upon the completion of these utilities, the street will be repaved from St. Philip up to Taylor, and between Taylor and Angus, the street will be slowly sealed. To give you a little background about this project, the water mains on Mastic Avenue, this is, is over 50 years old, and it is in very poor condition. This stretch of pipeline has been patched and repatched, and also with a constant rupture of the water mains, it creates a, an, an issue for the neighborhood. Then city crew often have to expend significant time and effort for the repair and just, and maintenance also just to keep the, in order to provide uninterrupted water service for this area. The sewer system of this neighborhood is also in decrepit condition. And this area has a relatively flat grade, and that further impairs the flow of wastewater and cause sanitary sewer overflows. The water main replacement project has been a priority capital improvement project for the last several years. And during the repli, if we were to go ahead with this project, and while we have the street open, it is prudent that we also replace the wastewater main at the same time to minimize disruption to the neighborhood. Prior to advertising this project, this city staff met with the council utilities subcommittee to review the issues regarding sewer laterals and also cleanout connections. A sewer lateral is the section of underground pipe that goes from the house to the sewer main in the street. And we divide the sewer lateral into the upper and the lower laterals. The upper one being from the house to the property boundary, and the lower lateral from the property boundary to the sewer main. And also in between, there's usually a cleanout connection. There's a wide connection between the upper and lower laterals that provide access to cleaning the lower lateral. And in the meeting with the utilities subcommittee, the, the subcommittee concur with staff's recommendation that as part of the underground work for this project, the city went and saw the new low lateral from the sewer main up to the pavement, edge of the pavement. And the reason for replacing the lateral to the edge of pavement is because some of the latter, the sewer pipes, including laterals in this area, they are made of a material known as orangeberg, which is essentially cardboard. And that material would crumble if any significant force is applied to the pipe. So by installing the, the new lateral, the lower lateral, up to the edge of the pavement, there would be room for the contractor to chase the lateral upstream just in the event that where they unable to secure proper connection at the edge of the lateral, and they can still go beyond upstream underneath the sidewalk and to, to, to hook up the, the connection to the upper lateral. On May 19, the city notified 75 property owners along the Mastic Avenue regarding a public meeting to be held at City Hall on June 2 about this upcoming construction. The notice stated that many of the sewer laterals in the area are over 50 years old, and they may be damaged. And if the city finds that the upper lateral in such poor condition that it's, there's no reasonable way for the contractor to connect the low lateral, the new low lateral to the damaged upper lateral, then the city will give the homeowner three days to replace the upper lateral. And if the upper lateral is not repaired within three days, then the city may remove water service until the repair is made. The notice recommended that the property owners contact a private contractor to arrange for replacing the upper lateral, or made a private agreement with the city's contractors to do the work. By installing a cleanout at the, at the property boundary, the city will also assume responsibility to maintain the lower sewer lateral. And there were no attendees at this public meeting. Well, staff plans to send a follow-up letter to the 75 property owners as, after the council award, and a third letter about approximately two weeks prior to construction to update the residents about this, the construction contract. And in compliance with the state contract code and the city's purchasing regulation, this project was advertised twice in San Mateo Times and also in, on the city website. A total of 18 contractors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting on May 18.
May 18.
Yes.
All right, that's enough.
Okay, and this second slide showed the bid results. A total of six bids were received by the city and opened on May 28. And with the following bid results. The low bidder, KJ Woods Construction in the amount of $1,295,287. The engineer estimate is $1.65 million. As you can see, the six bids received were within range of the engineer's estimate. And with the low bidder, approximately 20% below the engineer estimate. And this reflects a relatively competitive climate for the industry bidding climate. KJ Woods has a valid contractor's license and has met the qualifications set forth in the contract documents, and is considered to be a qualified responsive and responsible bidder. The contract allowed the, for 100 working days to complete the work. If the council would approve the award of this contract, it's possible for the city to finalize the agreement with the contractor by August 1, and then construction can be completed by the end of December. And for this third slide here, that shows the fiscal impact. The proposed construction budget for this Mastic Avenue utility project is $1.56 million. And that includes the bid price plus the 20% contingency. And the 20% contingency, it's a little higher than the standard 15%. Is, this is due to the fact that we anticipate that the contractor may encounter damaged sewer lateral, and they have to do further work to, to go upstream and under the sidewalk to connect the, the laterals. And the total construction cost is animated as $1.675 million. And this is well within the fiscal year 2010 to 11 proposed expenditure of $2.35 million for the combined water and sewer wastewater main replacement projects. So with that, I'm open for questions.
Any questions?
Through the chair.
Through the chair. It's interesting, because you say that, I mean, in the bulk of the introduction of the, of the staff report, you say that, you know, that these sewer mains and everything are over 50 years old. Well, isn't everything in the city pretty much 50 years old, except that things that have just, that have been replaced in the last 10 years, and possibly everything, things west of, west of skyline or something? So everything is over 50 years old, correct? What makes this section so important? I mean, are we looking at just hundreds and hundreds of 3,000-foot sections of replacement? I mean, this just happens to be the one we're going to do this year?
Well, the 50 years old is a conservative estimate. Some part of the city might be more 50 years old, and this part, I mean, some other parts may be less 50 years old. This is actually the earlier part of San Bruno that is way over 50 years old. So I would say it's more in the 1920, 1930 that this sewer, this areas was constructed. And that's when the orange pipe, orangeberg pipe.
Well, I guess, I guess not being facetious, but, I mean, you catch my attention if, if you say that it's a 80 or 90-year-old section of piping versus more than 50 years old, because I'm more than 50 years old, and my piping's.
I'm not.
My plumbing's okay, but.
For the record.
I want to clarify, in addition, Ving already emphasized in the beginning of his presentation that the main reason besides the age, and certainly this portion of the city is the oldest part of the city, and the age of the pipe is probably.
Constant breaks.
Yes, than in other portion of the city. But the main reason why this project was prioritized as the first urgency project is the cost of the ongoing maintenance and response time for the water main on, at this location. And mainly, the water replacement project really drove the priority on, to replace in, at this location. And how you can see from the result, certainly replacing them in the same time really is a financial advantage, besides the fact how Ving already emphasized is a less disruption to the residents of the area that replacing both of those sewer and water in the same time and paving the street, that really will guarantee for many years to come that the utilities and the street was addressed, and you are not replacing just the water, and then you are coming back for sewer replacement, and you are cutting up the street again. Also, the sewer has, and in many locations at this section, is structurally already failed. You can even see in the pavement bumps that, based on the description of our employee, you can see her, basically, the main already had structural failure through this whole
Now I'm more convinced. Okay. My only other concern is that you're, you're going through a whole series of notifications to these 75 property owners. I would make it very clear to them that they need to notify the city, or at least confirm with the city that they have been, you know, that they know what's going on. It'd be nice, it's nice that you're going to provide them with, you know, three notices, but how do we know that, you know, that there's a percentage of property owners that aren't even responding to the third notice? I would feel a lot more comfortable that we do our due diligence to make sure that those property owners, and in many cases, there may be a rental unit where the person that, you know, the person that suffers from a water, water being turned off is actually a tenant. So, because, because of a non-responsive property owner. So I would, I would hope that we do everything we can to at least get some confirmation that, that a property owner knows that this, this project is going on.
The department will follow up, and will do everything what is feasible and possible to make sure that the residents are aware of the situation, and they are engaged.
Thank you. Through the chair, a little bit of what council member Ibera said. That was my concern, when I walked in and I saw some multi-units. So obviously, we'd probably go to the property owner, not to those four folks that are residing within that unit structure. So that's a concern as far as the parking. Is that also being addressed, as far as will that disrupt? Will they be able to get in and out access? We have our cable department that comes in and out at the back in near Taylor. We have a business that also is up the street that has their parking that you enter from El Camino, from Mastic. So I'm also a little, because when you're saying we're going to shut it off in three days, I understand why. But how are we going to be assured that they have had notification and, you know, things do happen, people throw it away, maybe, whatever the case may be? I would just hate that what we could have prevented caused more anger by us not going the extra step, or, and also communicating how long the project would be to the residents. They have a phone number that can, they can contact in order to get any data or information. Those are some of my questions. On that, I don't know if that could be addressed by the director or whomever.
Yes, regarding the, the instance that we might have to turn off the water, because we are only bringing the sewer lateral to the pavement, and we anticipated we, that by going further upstream, that we will be able to secure a proper connection. And we don't anticipate that there will be too many of such instances that we have to turn off the water. And hopefully, there will be none. And in case there is something like that, we will personally work on a case-by-case basis, contact the homeowner, do our due diligence to, 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 to work with the homeowner to make sure that nobody will suffer at the, you know.
And you'll communicate the, the parking and traffic, and just so that people are aware that it's going to be challenging, they may not get in there, et cetera. I think it's just important, the businesses might be affected with their, their parking on Mastic, you know, just those things. I think it's just communication, that's what's key.
Definitely. And with all our sewer projects, we, we notified the homeowners that, you know, regarding the.
The residents.
The homeowner and the resident that they might anticipate a little bit of noise, a little bit of dust, and there might be some inconvenience with displacement of parking. And at all time, like all our other projects, the residents will be able to go in and out of the driveway. The contractor to lay down plates and things like that for them. So nobody will be stranded out of their homes, yes.
Just for your comfort level, also, Ving didn't mention specifically that the water main is a open trench construction, but the sewer is not. That means, yes, will be disruption to the residents, but is, is not quite that high versus both of those constructions would be open trench constructions. And just to follow up on your questions and concern, the department will make sure that not just the property owners, but also the residents will be notified as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, action?
Go ahead and introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Rockaway Construction, Inc., the library bathroom remodel and electrical service project in the amount of $32,000, and approving a construction budget in the amount of $37,000.
Good evening, mayor and council. We go from $1.6 million construction contract to a $37,000 construction contract.
But still, welcome.
The, the, the project before you tonight is to make accessibility improvements to our library facility that are very much needed. As you recall, back in October, the community services department was successful in securing grant funding from the San Mateo County Department of Housing via community development block grant to install a wheelchair lift that will bring patrons from the first floor of the library to the mezzanine level of the library, as well as to make accessibility improvements to the first-floor public restroom. So with that funding received, we now can, can start to, to build that project, and we've done so in, in two phases. So the first phase is going to be the remodel of the public restroom, as well as putting in the new electrical service that will be able to carry the wheelchair lift. The wheelchair lift installation and procurement is sort of done by a specialty contractor, so we didn't want to confuse that with what a general building contractor does, which their bread and butter is sort of bathroom and electrical and sort of general remodeling work. So we have prepared a scope of work, and we prepared some specifications for the bathroom remodel and for the electrical service. The electrical service will also not only power future wheelchair lift, they'll also provide some electrical service for some new workstations on the mezzanine level of the library, where folks can plug in their laptops and provide some additional seating and do some additional work up there. So we'll also be taking care of that with this contract as well. We advertised our bid and released it according to state contract code, municipal contract code. We had three bidders for the project. An unusual event happened where the low bidder in the amount of $30,700 did not submit a bid bond with their bid, bid submittals. The bid bond guarantees to the city that the contractor's not going to sort of skip town before the council awards contract. So without that bid bond, they were deemed a non-responsive bidder. So we went to the second lowest bidder, which was Rockaway Construction at $32,000. As council recalls, Rockaway has won previous low bid contract for remodel of the fire station 51 for a bathroom and dormitory re-model, very similar work, so they are certainly a qualified and competent contractor to, to do this work at the, the library. If council were to award the contract and the city to issue a notice to proceed, the work would have to complete within 20 working days after that notice to proceed is issued. Work will have to occur during library working hours, however its staffs and the contractors' intent, to minimize the loud sort of boring and drilling and loud hammering to occur prior to the library opening. We have several hours each morning during the week before the library opens up. We hope to accomplish most, most of the destructive, you know, sound disruptive work during that period of time. And we think, you know, we think we can accommodate that. And I believe that's the summary of the projects of the, again, the contract price is $32,000 with a 15% contingency of, we're bringing the total construction budget to $37,000. And the director and I are happy to take questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair, what is the $10,000 of bathroom remodeling?
Alas, the bathroom remodeling work is, is more than, than $10,000. So the, the total price is $32,000. The electrical is about, about $20,000 of that, electrical is about, you know, 15. So the electrical work, good news is, the electrical work is much cheaper than we had originally anticipated, whereas the bathroom work is more expensive. So we're still looking at a total project budget of the $80,000 and change, which is what we originally predicted, just the proportions are a little bit shifted. And, and all that will be.
What sort of improvements will the, will the bathroom get?
Oh, sort of improvements, absolutely. The, essentially, the bathroom layout sort of switches to accommodate the, someone who is using a wheelchair. So we're moving the toilet and the sink around basically to accommodate that. So the new opening for the public restroom is actually going to occur into the magazine room. So there'll be sort of a new door, or wall off the existing door, and we configure the plumbing to allow that to happen.
So fully accessible?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions or action?
I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item E, adopt a resolution approving a side letter agreement between the city of San Bruno and the San Bruno Management Employees Association, SBMEA, extending the existing memorandum of understanding and authorizing its execution by the city manager. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. With this action tonight, we are, we have completed two contract negotiations with the, two of our six employee bargaining units. As the council is aware, the discussions that have occurred in the negotiations of those agreements with all six units to date have included a serious and focused discussion relevant to the city's severe financial constraints, and have not generally discussed any improvements to the existing salary and benefits attributable to the memorandums of understanding with each bargaining unit. As I indicated, this is the second group to have completed those negotiations, and I'll run quickly through the highlights of that agreement that is captured in the form of a side letter, which extends both the current MOU as well as side letter agreements that were entered in 2008 and 2009. This agreement would extend for a period of two additional years, moving until, extending through June 30 of 2012. The agreement would continue the existing situation of no salary increases through that time period. It continues the six-day furlough, which was implemented in the 2009 side letter, or a 2.3% reduction in salary attributable to that furlough. It continues a reduction in a previous management benefit, that is buyout of management leave that continues to be not provided for the term of this existing, this new side letter agreement. And it additionally includes a reduction, an additional reduction in a management benefit, that being the personal professional development, or reduces that benefit by 50%, again in recognition of the city's severe financial challenges. Additionally, similar to the miscellaneous bargaining unit with whom we recently reached an agreement, and you previously approved a side letter extending through the time period, same time period through June of 2012. Similar to that agreement, this agreement calls for additional furlough time to be taken in two-day increments, two days in the coming fiscal year, and two days additional in the following fiscal year for salary reductions in the amount of 3.08% total in the first year, and 3.85% total in the second year, those additional furlough days being equivalent to the cost of the anticipated increase in the medical premium. So all considered, I would commend this side letter agreement to your consideration and to your approval tonight, with the only additional comment that I appreciate the work that was done by this bargaining unit to step up and recognize that as managers in this organization, we have a responsibility not only to acknowledge and respond to the severe financial challenges that the city is experiencing, but to do that in an expedient and collaborative manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, and I know I speak for the entire council, this, this type of resolution, this information usually is put on a consent agenda, but specifically, I know the manager wants to recognize these employees, and we would like to also thank them very, very much for stepping up and really helping us make a difference in this very difficult budget time. So, any action?
You're going to introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 11, report of commissioners, boards, and committees, there are none tonight. Item 12, comments from council members. Item 13, closed session, we have four closed session items. The first one is closed session to confer with legal counsel regarding pending workers' compensation claim, employee versus city of San Bruno, and JT2 Integrated Workers' Compensation Appeals Board, ADJ 3497500, California Government Code 54956.9A. Item B, closed session to provide direction to legal counsel in regards to California Trout versus Urban Water Suppliers at All, State Water Resource Control Board, California Government Code S 54956.9A. I'm going to skip to item D, the city manager and human resources director requested closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 4957.6 regarding direction for labor negotiations with Public Safety Mid-Management Police Fire and Mid-Management Bargaining Units. And last, but not least, item C, a closed session to consider appointment of interim city attorney, California Government Code S 54957. And Pamela would like to say a few words. And Pamela would like to say a few words.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this evening, as you indicated, I am leaving San Bruno in order to accept a job as the city attorney of Redwood City. But before I leave, there is something that I wanted to tell you. And that is, you know, sometimes in your life, you come across a person or set of people, as in my case, this council, as it is presently configured, and as it was originally configured with Mayor Franzella and councilmember Palace. And sometimes, you're lucky enough to come across somebody or a group of people who changed the direction of your career or the trajectory of your career. And that has been my experience here. As you know, when I came to San Bruno, my experience was a little bit different than the typical city attorney. My experience was really in litigation, and I had not practiced as a generalist. But you gave me that opportunity. The first year was a real challenge, and I do remember my very first council meeting that Mayor Franzella threw me a question. And despite the fact that the question was a yes/no question, yes-or-no question, and I had a 50% chance of getting it right, I got it wrong, which he must certainly let me know. But despite that, you stuck with me and helped me grow into becoming your city attorney. The reason I wanted to mention this to you, and to the, to the public too, is that, for me, this was, I realized when I became city attorney, that everything that I had done before was interesting, and it was important, and it was fun, but it was really all a lead into this moment, when I found the thing that I really wanted to do, and it has been this. When, when I think back on your decision, and I realize it is just so consistent with everything that you have done over the past eight years, because every decision that I have seen you make, this council and the prior council, has always been made with care, with concern for the community, and the interest of the organization. So with that, I wanted to thank you. It's been my pleasure and my honor to serve as city attorney. I also wanted to thank our prior city manager, Frank Hedley, who really helped me learn how to become city attorney, our current city manager, Connie Jackson, who has helped me immensely along the way, previous and current department heads, all of whom have been fabulous to work with, many different employees, too many to name amongst the other, 200. But I will say that, you know, sometimes I hear in the news people criticizing government, and I often wonder who are they talking about? Because when I look at this organization, and I see all the smart, hard-working people, I can't imagine who it is that they, they actually have in mind. Last, but not least, I did want to mention Vi Weber, who has been my longtime suffering assistant, who so many times has made me look at with all the charts and the information that he, she has helped me produce for you. So with that, I just wanted to let you know that I'll be happy to assist you in the transition to a new city attorney in any way that I can. So thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, and I, I hope we all have an opportunity to, to thank you in another public forum in future date, along with the other two councilmembers. But I do remember those couple days that we went through interviews, and this is special, you know, for myself and for the mayor, and with councilmember O'Connell, that it was one of the first, it was special because we had to make the decision. And as much as we've appreciated and prospered with our staff, those weren't our decisions. Our decision was the current city manager and U.S. city attorney. And we thought we were making a bold move because of your inexperience in municipal, in working in municipality. But we, we felt very good about the decision, and from day one, we were right. And I believe that what makes it so, so good of a, of a partnership for these eight years has been that you have not wavered on anything, you've been very clear and concise on all of, all of your duties and all of the cases. You've been very approachable and very easy to speak with and understand the, you know, complexities of, you know, the legal aspects of the city and what affects us. And we've been better by it, the city has been very successful by it, and your reward is to go to a bigger, more complex, and, you know, bigger challenges. And we, we just hope that we can, you know, fill your shoes. So thank you, on behalf of the council.
Vice Mayor.
I'm going to make mine very brief, only because I prefer to do it on a more personal basis, but I, like, prior councilmember, I wasn't here to make that decision, so when I walked in in 2005, you were there to tell me, before I even got sworn in, what not to do, and how not to violate the Brown Act. And even as the time progressed and we began to understand each other, I even enjoyed very much our dialogues amongst each other, even when we didn't agree, and sometimes the passionate, which I enjoy, dialogue that we had in your office that came as the years progressed. And I do know that whether it's that we agreed, we didn't agree, whether it went exactly how staff or the city attorney wishes or not, I do know, and I believe and stand by this, that I know that your care and your concern, and your dedication and loyalty to this council, past council, to the staff, to the community, were never questioned, were never in doubt in my mind. And I do wish you and your family extreme well wishes for your future, good health and happiness in your new career.
Well, Pamela, Redwood City is really lucking out, really lucking out, and I made them very well aware of that, just so you know. You also helped us grow, and you were always, and I don't mean this derogatorily, but you were always at our heels. I mean, don't step here, don't step there, be very careful of what you say, what you do, and if you have to say something that I don't recommend, just be careful doing If you didn't know the answer to things, you admitted it, and you went out and found out. One way or another, you found out, whether it be research, whether it be the computer, whether it be Vi, and I have to congratulate Vi also, or whether it be through outside council. So you will be missed immensely, and we will be calling on you, and I know even Bill out there said he's going to miss giving you the little cup of M&amp;M's at the beginning of the meetings, so they won't get that in Redwood City. No, you, you really will be missed, and you have some very, very challenging times down there with, you know, a lot of big land use issues, and it's going to be a challenge for you, but because of the foundation you've had here, I believe, working with us and us working with you, you're ready to go. So congratulations. We will have no reportable action after the closed sessions, and this meeting will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting of July 13th, right here at the senior center. Everybody have a safe Fourth of July.